From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you, and welcome to the Tuesday, October 17, 2017, Meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We're going to begin today's meeting with our flag salute, and that will be led by Tim Lovely, the Director of Health, Safety, and Environmental at McPherson Oil, and I ask if you remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, next, I'll ask for a report on actions taken in closed session. I'll turn to County Council, Mark Nations. Mr. Nations, good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning. The Item 53 from last week's agenda in the morning was continued over into the afternoon due to lack of time in the morning. That closed session was fully held, and there is no reportable action coming out of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nations. If you'd like to follow along with our agenda this morning, they are located at the two tables near the exits, and we'll begin with our consent agenda. All items listed with a CA or a C above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. The CA represents the consent agenda for the Board of Supervisors. The C represents the consent agenda for In-Home Support Services Public Authority. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So at this time, I'll read the consent agenda items. Starting on page two, Item C, I'm sorry, Item Two and Item Five are on consent. On page three, Items Eight through Ten, as well as Twelve through Fourteen are on consent. On page four, all items Fifteen through Twenty-Two are on consent. On page five, all items Twenty-three through Thirty are on consent. And finally, on page six, Items Thirty-one through Thirty-four are on consent. Are there any members of the audience who would like to make any comment on the consent agenda? Please come forward. Ask you to state your name and then make your comment or ask your question, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Dennis Fox. Like to comment on Twenty-Two.
Okay.
It has to do with getting some grants from the federal government for the fire department. And I'd like to give an attaboy to the fire department. And we have an awful lot of federal land here, and I think it's appropriate that the feds kick in some bucks, not only protect them, but as you may have noticed, I have a concern about water. And in the 1920s, the Weeks Act discussed saving the watershed where the water is produced in the national forests and BLM properties. And this will help save it. And that is an option of saving the watersheds for when the water and the rain and the snow comes and protecting those. The other option, which I'm not too happy with, is putting pipes in up in the Delta, which would give somebody, allow somebody to have their hand on the water, on the faucet up there. And it's happened in other counties, and it's happened here. So I really think, would like to really congratulate in getting some partnerships between the county and the federal government and getting some funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Any other comments on the consent agenda? Please come forward. Please state your name and tell us which item you want to comment on.
Nadine Escalante. Good morning, Mr. Scrivner.
Good morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, Item Number Twenty-Five, Request to Employ Retired County Employee Brandon Beecher as Administrative Coordinator. My concern is having Mr. Beecher re-employed with the County of Kern. If we're trying to make this a better county, why would we employ somebody who was in five EEOC complaints for harassment and discrimination retaliation when he worked for probation? I think this would be very important, that as we try to build the county up to being a better organization, a better county agency, that is an example to the rest of California, that we would not want to have people with that kind of background in history and legal, major legal history, and a liability to the County of Kern. We wouldn't want them working for the county anymore. And I know personally, as well as the other women that have suffered under his reign, and we do say "his reign" because he, it's terrible, it's ugly. We would think this would be what's best for the other staff at probation, as well as the community.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Are there any members of staff who would like to make any comments? Okay, seeing none, then, I'll return to the board and request either, if any of the board members would like to remove an item, or ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda and adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority.
Motion on Consent.
Excuse me.
Supervisor Gleason.
I just can't sit here and disregard those comments. I think I'd like to have a little more explanation, understanding of exactly what that issue is. Is there any validity to what she's saying? Are there some things that are being overlooked? Are we doing things properly? And I just don't think we can disregard that. So I would like, I don't know if motions are even made. I would recommend, it would be okay, Mr. Couch, if we pulled that particular item off consent.
Sure.
And then went forward with the motion. In that case, I will second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of Item Twenty-Five, which would be pulled off consent, and to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the In-Home Supportive Services Authority. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
We are now sitting as the In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority, and we have Item One on consent. Are there any members of the audience who would like to make any comment on Item One? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board and request a motion to approve the consent agenda and to adjourn as the In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
You have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
The next item on our agenda is Item Number Three, Under Resolutions and Proclamations. This is to proclaim October 18, 2017, as National Bioenergy Day in Kern County, and Supervisor Maggert will make this presentation.
Thank you, motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
You have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Good morning, colleagues. I am joined this morning by Doug Christian.
Yes.
Come on up. Who is with DTE Energy, and behind him is Zach McPherson and Tim Lovely, who are both with McPherson. Thank you all for being here. We are here this morning to talk about proclaiming October 18, 2017, as National Bioenergy Day in Kern County, and I'm going to read some facts that will help us understand the significance of bioenergy and its role in our community. Bioenergy is an industry whose companies produce electricity and heat generated from wood and organic materials. You can't drive down Highway 46 without noticing how many big, huge orchards have been taken down, and those big, huge piles of, you don't know what they are at first. My wife asked me what those things are, and I explained to her, they're taking them to a bioenergy cogent plant. This industry is a domestic energy source, working to keep America Forest healthy, provides a place for biomass to be reused, and prevents the opening, the open burning, rather, of agricultural residuals. Bioenergy plants like Mount Pozo Cogeneration Plant provide a vital energy solution for our communities by reducing carbon emissions. Mount Pozo prevents the open burning of agricultural residuals, preventing harmful emissions into our valley's air. Mount Pozo Plant uses 100% woody biomass from nearby agriculture and urban sources to produce 44 megawatts of clean renewable energy, enough to power 3,000 homes. I bet I'm stealing all your thunder on that. The nearby oil extraction operations reuse their water, and the power from bioenergy at Mount Pozo helps produce steam that aids in the additional oil in Kern County, or production in Kern County. Mount Pozo Cogeneration Plant uses produced water from the oil field extraction in its daily operations. This includes water usage for cooling towers, boilers, and onsite dust suppression. Over the course of the operating year, millions of gallons of oil field water unusable for any other use is provided to the plant. By using this oil field water, Mount Pozo avoids relying on other groundwater sources to operate its plant. As such, this results in having groundwater for irrigating crops or domestic potable uses. Bioenergy plants provide employment opportunities for local residents. All 38 employees at Mount Pozo reside in Kern County. And in light of all that, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we happily proclaim October 18 as National Bioenergy Day in Kern County, as evidenced by the signature of our Chairman, the Honorable Zach Scrivner. And this is 17th day of October 2017. If I didn't steal all your thunder, tell us a little bit more about what's going to happen that day, and we appreciate the good things that happen in our community because of your operation and your operation.
Again, I'm Doug Christian, I'm Environmental Health and Safety Manager at Mount Pozo Cogeneration. It's on behalf of our partners, DTE Energy Services and McPherson Energy Corporation. Mount Pozo Cogeneration would like to thank Supervisor Maggert and the entire board for proclaiming October 18, 2017, as National Bioenergy Day in Kern County. Supervisor Maggert did a nice job of covering all the key points, the great benefits of our biomass plants. I guess the only thing I could add is, in addition to 38 employees, there are many contractors that work at our facility as well. So we've made a contribution to the local economy in that way, most of them are local. I guess, again, he's covered it well, so I'll just finish up. Once again, thank you for recognizing the contribution of bioenergy plants in America and for your service to Kern County. That's all.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you Supervisor Maggert. Next is Item Number Four. This is to proclaim October 15 through the 21st, 2017, as Retirement Security Week in Kern County, and Supervisor Perez will make this proclamation.
Thank you, Chairman, motion on proclamation.
You have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board. I have with me the esteemed Jordan Kaufman, not Kaufman, Kaufman. Okay, good, took me a while, but I got it now, I think, are, of course, our own treasure and tax collector. Good morning. Today, we are proclaiming October 15 through the 21st, 2017, as Retirement Security Week in Kern County. National Retirement Security Week began in 2006, in an effort to raise public awareness about the importance of saving for retirement. National Retirement Security Week is held every year during the third week of October and provides an opportunity for employees to reflect on their personal retirement goals and determine if they are on target to reach those goals. During this week, employers will often educate workers how savings, how saving for retirement is key to financial health and security during retirement years, and raise awareness of the various options in saving for retirement. Here in Kern County, our treasure and tax collector will be hosting informational sessions on retirement savings plans for our county employees. Thank you for doing that. This is our effort to encourage employees to begin planning early for retirement and to take advantage of the resources available to them. This is also a great reminder that it is never too early to begin planning. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I join my colleagues in making this proclamation. October 15 through the 21st, 2017, is Retirement Security Week, and we thank Jordan Kaufman and his staff for providing valuable information and resources to our county employees in an effort to secure their futures for themselves and their families. Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed October 15 to the 21st, 2017, as Retirement Security Week in Kern County. This recognition has been entered into the official board minutes and signed by our Chairman, Mr. Zach Scrivner, and Mr. Kaufman. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you Supervisor Perez, and thank you, and good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just have a couple of comments. Supervisor Perez covered it quite well, thank you very much, but do want to thank your board for proclaiming October 15 through the 21st as Retirement Security Week in Kern County. On September 28, the U.S. Senate passed Resolution Number 274, designating October 15 through the 21st as National Retirement Security Week on a national level, and so having it done on a local level is important as well. The goals are to raise public awareness for various tax-preferred retirement vehicles, increase personal financial literacy, and engage the people on the keys to success in achieving and maintaining retirement security throughout their lifetimes. My office works together with our deferred compensation record keeper, Voya Financial, to provide comprehensive and personalized deferred compensation program services. Our push this year for Retirement Security Week in Kern County is twofold. One, we want to make sure that as many employees as possible that are eligible for the 6% deferred compensation match that the county provides signs up for deferred comp and really takes advantage of that match. That's very important. Secondly, we want to continue to educate employees on the benefits and impacts as a result of transitioning our record keeper to Voya Financial. And to those ends, we, our dedicated local Voya Financial representative, Liliana Fahell, who's been before this board before, she will be providing educational sessions to Kern County employees on their journey to retirement. And those will be held here in the administrative building, but also in the outlying areas. And this year, Liliana will be at county facilities in Mojave, Taft, and Delano. So she's going to be all over this week educating Kern County employees. And so as your administrator for the deferred compensation plans, I just want to thank your board, thank you Supervisor Perez, for proclaiming this week as National Retirement Security Week in Kern County. Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Perez, and thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Next on our agenda is Item Six, Public Presentation. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter, not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. So I'll now ask if there are any members of the audience who would like to make a public presentation. We ask that you state your name and observe our two-minute time limit. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Deana Murphy, your Department Head for Human Services, and I wanted to bring to your attention an invitation that I've had passed out to each of you regarding the Gatsby Gala, and that is the third annual fundraiser for foster children in the Jameson Children's Shelter. And what I'd like to do is give a special thank you and shout out to Russell Judd of Kern Medical, who is our premier sponsor this year, and thank him for his dedication and his team's dedication to our children in this community. You can get tickets, we have about 12 left, we expect another sellout, but we're told that this is touted as the most elegant party in town, and truly, you have one after another after another family who roll out to support this function. I'd be remiss in not also recognizing Greg Beinum, who has been now a third-year Gatsby Gala supporter. So a big night on October 28 at the Seven Oaks Country Club, complete with L.A. Follies Dancing Girls and a big live band and a beautiful meal. So please, if you can, participate, and certainly, if anyone wants additional information, I will just give the shout out to the kernpartnership@gmail.com to connect for further information. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sounds like a fantastic event. Any other public presentations, please come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Scrivener. Nadine Escalante, good morning, board. A scripture I wanted to share with you is this from my War Room book. "I will put my spirit in you and make it possible for you to do what I tell you and live by my commands." As I come to these board meetings, I've never, I've been in this room before I ever came to a board meeting when I worked at probation for training, and it was the most intimidating. So I was like, oh my gosh, I'm in the Board of Supervisors. To be able to have the strength to come and speak up to you is God's strength. And I'm very thankful, because I know you're listening. I see the changes that are being made. I see the cooperation that I'm getting from Kern County probation, and I'm just so thankful, because I love probation. I love this county. I was born and raised in this county. We are a huge county. We represent an example to the rest of California, and I really urge us to get back to that role. As you all know, I speak about transparency with our police and accountability. As I have talked about issues with my seven-year-old nephew, God bless me with him, and I have been his protector, his mother. And I have seen, unfortunately, when I go back and look at documentation on him, failure to act on the Sheriff's Department and Child Protective Services. We have to remember our children are our leaders. What we teach our children at home is what they're going to become. And I know if we had cameras, those accountabilities would not happen. They would be making sure they're doing their job correctly, because you're being recorded, there's a camera on you. If you, if there is a complaint, there's an independent review board who's going to listen and review the information, the documentation that the other person's providing. So I just ask you to please consider that as we come into this new year, this new budget, and we want to make changes in Kern County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who'll be next, please? Good morning.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Robert Hunter. I am a Kern County resident in District Four Supervisor Couch's district, and I just wanted to present to you a draft report. This is following, I don't want to present the report now, but I want to leave it in your hands and let you know that I'm available to discuss it. I was in the Planning Commission meeting last week, and it just seemed we were talking about the same things in the Planning Commission meeting. The, there was, the discussion kind of went round and round with the usual items on cannabis. And in particular, with all due respect, I know our commissioners are very giving of their time and committed to their job, but there just seemed to be, well, one commissioner said they didn't know anything about cannabis, and that concerned me. And so I've been engaged on the issue for two years, and I love Kern County also, it's my home. I'm concerned about my neighbors leaving and who's coming to Kern County, and my children in the future, and so I work downtown, though, so I see a lot that goes down downtown. But I put together these slides to just kind of highlight the issue with the regulations in California, just to present that the California regulations aren't the only option. Cannabis is still in its infancy. I believe it's going to go national, and there will be a time when it will be federally recognized. But I also believe that the California regulations are not a good fit for Kern County, and I believe the people of Kern County realize that, and there's definitely good reasons why it is not a good fit. So with that, I'm going to surrender the rest of my time here, but I will do my best to make myself available at your convenience to discuss these slides, as well as any other issues concerning cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Supervisor Couch.
Mr. Hunter, I just wanted to, I was going to ask you to leave your contact information, but I just noticed you, it's on here, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public presentations? Okay, seeing none, we'll then move on to board member announcements or reports. Okay, now seeing a request from members of the board, so we'll go to the next item on our agenda, which is Item Number 11. This is under the Clerk of the Board, Selection of California State Association of Counties' Board of Directors Members for 2018. And this is a Clerk of the Board item, so I'll ask Ms. Kraus to start us off.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Each year, the California State Association of Counties, known as CSAC, requests the election of representatives from all California counties to serve on the CSAC Board of Directors. Your board will need to select one member and one alternate member for a one-year term before the annual CSAC Conference in November. Currently, Supervisor Gleason serves as the primary member, and Supervisor Maggert serves as the alternate. Supervisor Perez also currently serves as CSAC's first Vice President. Therefore, it is recommended that your board appoint a member and alternate member to the CSAC Board of Directors and direct the Clerk of the Board to notify CSAC. Thank you, I have, I will answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do I have any members of the audience who would like to make any comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board. Supervisor Gleason.
Thanks, Chairman. First of all, congratulations to our District Five Supervisor. Great job. We could not have a better representative at CSAC. I'm thrilled, and Kern County is pleased that you're doing such a great job for us. I would respectfully, you know, I've talked to Zach, and he seems to have an interest in being a board member, so I would make a nomination for Supervisor Scrivner to be a board member for CSAC.
Excellent. I would passionately second that.
Good. Who wants to be second? Mike, did you?
I was never called upon to go last year. If anybody else would like to have the role of not having any time to go next year, you're welcome to take my place. I'm happy to serve if you want me to. Okay.
Then my nomination is for Chairman Scrivner to be our board member with the alternate, Supervisor Maggert.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you Supervisor Gleason, and thank you, board. I look forward to the opportunity to serve. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on our agenda was pulled off a consent, this is Item Twenty-Five. This is a Request to Employ Retired County Employee Brandon Beecher as an Administrative Coordinator/Step E for the period expiring June 30, 2018, or 960 hours, whichever occurs first effective October 17, 2017. Fiscal impact $27,631.11. And we have Deana Murphy with us. She is our Director of Human Services. Ms. Murphy, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The Department of Human Services is requesting to hire retired individual Brandon Beecher. He is retired after 25 years of service plus to the Department of Probation. He left in good standing, retired in good standing, without mar to his reputation. Certainly, as we're attempting to continue on with our lean Six Sigma processes, and Mr. Beecher having been over all of internal investigations and internal affairs for probation, he is our prime candidate for really helping us with process improvement, but continuing our own process of holding internal staff accountable and leading our investigations and process improvement. So I see Ms. Escalante, I think, has departed, and I don't know her personal experience, but not aware of any situation that would have reflected poorly upon Mr. Beecher's reputation. And I believe that the Chief of Probation is here as well to... And I believe that the Chief of Probation is here as well to attest to Mr. Beecher's character.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Appreciate that. Good morning.
Good morning. TR Miracle, Chief Probation Officer. I just want to say a few words about Brandon Beecher. When he retired, he was one of my deputy chiefs, and prior to that, I actually worked for him. And I am aware of no formal discipline for any of his actions. He retired in good standing. I think he would make an excellent choice for the Department of Human Services, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Miracle, thank you very much. Any other comments from members of the public or staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you. TR, can I ask you a question? Thank you for coming here and giving us your perspective that I respect ultimately. You're not personally aware of any complaints against Mr. Beecher, correct, or Mr. Beecher?
That's correct, and I don't know, because of his position, if he was named in several, just as a department head, I'm often named in things, but I know of no formal disciplines or formal findings of impropriety for him at all.
Okay, can you think of any reason why somebody would have that impression?
It's hard to guess what someone else would think, but it's conceivable because of the position that he held, where he was over our administrative services, and so a lot of internal investigations, so he would have been involved in internal investigations and other things, so perhaps somebody made that connection with, someone didn't like a decision that was made, or something like that, thought that he might be the reason. But again, that's just conjecture, I don't, I don't know.
Very helpful. Thank you so much, TR. And thank you, Deana.
Motion on staff's recommendation. Second.
Hey, you have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. That brings us to the conclusion of our agenda this morning. We do have three items to consider in closed session, items 35 and 36 under County Administrative Office, and item 37 under County Council. So this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Second.
We are adjourned.